It's six o'clock meeting, so at this point the Baldwin Park City Council Community Meeting, special meeting, November 20th, 2019, and the time is 6:05. At this point, we have the City Clerk, Ms. Jean M. Ayala, take roll call.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Mayor Protea Monica Garcia.
She stepped out.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, Ms. Jean Ayala. All right, so at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public communication, so if anyone wishes to speak, you're welcome to do so. Please state your name, and I have approximately three minutes. The seven o'clock meeting will open up at 7:00 PM. Yes, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ray Alber.
Yes.
And I am here to gain whatever information I can from the rent control ordinance that you're going to expose here. I was just curious as to why the city is enacting an ordinance when the state has enacted one, and wondering why it would, we would need a double level of bureaucracy to control that, and that hopefully the city has reasons for doing that, other than just trying to line some pockets with money and collect fees and control things that already would be under control of another jurisdiction of government. And hopefully, it would be simpler to just go with the state if it's enacted, rather than to have two levels and competing with each other. So, anyway, that is what I have to say.
All right.
And all around, all around, I think it's a bad idea regardless of whether the state or the city is doing it.
All right, thank you, and we'll be discussing this publicly shortly as well. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will now declare the public communication closed. So at this point, we're going to go ahead into the rent stabilization presentation presented by the City Attorney, Robert DeFoya, and Director of Community Development, Mr. Ben Hamin Martinez. So at this point, we'll start out with Mr. Ben. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'll go through this PowerPoint presentation regarding the draft rent stabilization ordinance. Purpose of the ordinance is due to a growing shortage of housing units, low vacancy rates, and so forth. It's created a serious problem for many Baldwin Park residents. These conditions can danger, endanger public health and welfare of local populations. The purpose of the ordinance is to alleviate this hardship by establishing what we all deem an RSO to regulate rents in the city of Baldwin Park. Under the proposed ordinance that you have the draft of tonight, the landlord may increase, landlords may increase the base rent ceiling to the CPI index of 3% per 12-month period. Beginning 120 days after the adoption of the ordinance, no landlord shall charge rent for any controlled units in an amount greater than the rent in effect one year prior, what we call the base rent ceiling. Landlords is required to post the controlled rents in a prominent place. Petitions by landlords for rent increases above the maximum allowable amount may be made to the CEO or hearing officer with an appeal to the City Council. No hearings will be allowed for tenant landlord types of disputes, and we are proposing a registration fee of $28 per controlled unit. Controlled units are residential rental units built prior to January 1st, 1995. They exclude mobile homes. This is the proposed language. It excludes mobile homes, duplexes, and single-family homes. The RSO would be applicable to all rental agreements, oral, written, and implied. And this is a quick graph that shows the controlled housing units. We see the breakdown, 3 to 4, 5 to 19, and so forth, a total of 1,455 units. We got this demographic data from a variety of sources. It's not always spot-on. Every source has a little different take on demographic information, but this is the best we could provide. So these would be the controlled units, as proposed in the RSO, the draft RSO. Other features, landlords can petition the City Council to make a determination of fair and reasonable rent if he or she is operating in a negative cash flow situation. Landlords cannot raise rents if they are not in compliance with any of the provisions of this ordinance or any applicable state, local, housing, health, and safety laws. Just cause evictions apply to all rental units in Baldwin Park. Landlords are highly restricted, and landlords cannot evict tenants unless tenant fails to pay his rent, cause substantial damages to the unit, commits legal acts, and several other circumstances as described in the RSO, and no fault evictions for all tenants living in good standing of or at or below 140% of median income shall be paid relocation allowances and moving expenses allowances. These are the housing units protected by the just clause eviction. This is the breakdown, so the total is approximately 6,900 or so units. Pass-through of surcharges, the City Council may approve pass-through of surcharges up to 50% of expense in the form of rent increases over a five-year period for capital improvements. Also, 1% of gas and electric expense over a 12-month period in the form of a rental increase if the landlord is paying the total amount of gas and electric bills for his or her tenants. Landlords can also petition the CEO and for a just cause, a rent increase of above the 3%. Their request, again, must be made in writing and can be appealed to the City Council. All the items that I've discussed are the most pertinent items in the draft resolution, again, covering all the discussion to date. And that's going to conclude the presentation. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. At this point, Legal Counsel, do you have any information that you wanted to share?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot of information. The presentation done by Ben was really good. Thank you, Ben. But I do want to mention that our rent control ordinance is in compliance with all of state law, which includes the Costa-Hawkins Act and other state rent control acts. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, council members have any questions? Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes, Mayor. I wish, I would like to have seen staff put more information, the data that you just showed in the staff report, because I didn't see any, just a one-page staff report. Also, it's, from reading the ordinance on the second page on, under definitions, if I'm reading it correctly, under section 129.01, definitions, controlled rental units, we are excluding duplexes and single-family homes, irregardless of when they're built. I mean, that's my understanding of that item. Is that correct, Attorney?
That is correct, Councilmember Pacheco.
Because last time that we discussed this, we were going to include single-family homes, but not in violation of the Hawkins Law. But then again, there's no discussion about that law and how that law works, so I would like to have seen that also in this staff report. And the other item that's not clear is how is the enforcement of this particular ordinance, who would take the lead on it? Do we have a, is our Housing Commissioner going to take the lead on that, or who would be the ones sort of enforcing this? Or what staff member would be the one taking enforcement of it?
It does have the enforcement remedies in the ordinance, and Ben's Department, Community Development Department, would be the one administering or receiving complaints. I don't know who the actual staff person would be, but maybe Ben would have more information about that.
It would probably be the housing manager, under Ben's direction.
Okay. Okay, so any disputes that came up, they would be the ones given an explanation? Is that how it would work, then?
Yes, as we see it, of course, we haven't regulated and enforced and administered a program like this in the past, but it would fall under the housing authority manager position, which, of course, right now is vacant. We're very close to recommending the approval to hire someone new, and then there would be administrative staff under that person to assist them.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, that's all the questions I have at this point.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, anyone else wishing to make any comments?
May I have a question?
Yes, Vice Mayor Monica, I got to see you.
Ben, can you tell us how many units are affected by this ordinance?
So approximately 1,455 per this slide that I just put up. However, I will again say that the demographic data, you know, from, depending on the source you look at, it will vary, so I...
And just to clarify, because this ties into also Councilmember Pacheco's question, is the way this has come back to you is there's two parts. These units you're looking at would be controlled as far as rent increases, but all of the units, and if you want to go to the other pie chart, all of the units would be, would fall under the provisions of the just cause eviction.
So you're talking, in other words, you're talking about the single-family homes?
Those would be covered by the just, by the just cause eviction provisions, but not by the rent caps.
And then, so we're looking here at the number, we have 6,907 units total in our city, or what is, what is this?
These are the numbers that we estimate that would fall under the just cause eviction clause, so that includes single-family, duplexes, mobile homes, and then all of the other units, 3 through 4, 5 through 19, 20 through 49, and 50-plus, which are covered by the rent caps.
Are these all the units, the housing units in our city?
These are all of the, yes.
Okay.
Rental units.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know what the percentage...
And that's the, and that's, it gets confusing, rental units, because you, your question, Councilmember, was, is this all of the units in the city? I even have to rack my brain. No, this is only the rental units, and that's why that number is lower.
Yeah, so, all right, so...
And again, that's just an approximation.
So how many units, how many housing units are in the city, total?
I think that number is upwards of 19,000.
Okay.
So let me just say, so in essence, the ordinance itself would cover all apartment units, solely apartment units. It doesn't include the mobile park units, and can you go back to that? I just want to, we could bring that up.
Yes, the rent cap only applies to the units you see here, which are apartment units pre-1995.
Right. So a total, is this the actual total right there, 60, 1,650?
Correct.
Total, right? You can barely see from here, but, so however, the actual, the actual ordinance itself will cover just cause for single-family homes. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
So that, okay, all right, so that's...
Which jumps that number at almost 7,000.
Mr. Mayor, when you have a chance?
Yes, yes, Councilmember. Yeah, let me just finish up real quick. All right, so I just wanted to make sure that I had that straight. So the total of 1,600 and somewhat apartment unit, or units, I guess I should say, right? Units themselves will be covered by the actual ordinance itself under rent control. All righty, okay, leaving the single, leaving the single-family homes with just, the just cause, so, okay.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to hear from the public. I mean, this was a meeting for everybody to come up and speak.
Yeah, I know, we have public communication, but does any, you know what? Let's finish off here. Let's finish off here. Let's finish here, and then we'll definitely open it up. Okay, that's fine.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, excuse me, so again, working on this draft along with city staff and along with the council members, you know, what we have here, you know, in the sense of the numbers and so forth, is we have to keep things in mind. You know, as Ben mentioned, we have the, you know, the pre-existing laws, Hocken-Costa that restricts us even more so. We also have, which I'll consider the new governor's bill, which is also, also adds another layer, and then what we have here ourselves. There was a question from the audience in regards to why we're doing this. I think one of the main reasons for, at least from my perspective, is for why we're moving and pushing for this, is to provide protections for not only the tenants, but also the landlords. This draft ordinance provides some flexibility for also the landlords to be able to invest in their properties and to incentivize them to improve their units. That is something that we do not have, and that's something that's not available at the state level at any, at any, at any level. So that does provide some cost sharing for landlords and tenants. They'll be able to do that for their most common areas and common improvement areas. What we also do is, you know, this, this ordinance, you know, sitting down and speaking with public counsel last week, which they reviewed for the most part, and they did provide some incredible feedback, which we certainly took into account, is very, you know, tenant-friendly. You know, in regards to, if we look at just the unincorporated areas that LA County has provided, you know, their caps of rents go up even higher than what we're looking at here in Baldwin Park. That's going up to close to about 8%. We're looking at a cap of no more than 3%, considering that, you know, most residents don't receive a COLA of 3% or more. So that's, you know, but at the same time, we also want to be, you know, mindful that a property owner has the ability to, you know, make a reasonable rent, you know, fair rate, fair return on their investment, but not necessarily at the cost of tenants. So there is a process in which they have the ability to go through that process, in which the city will be able to review that and either adopt it or refuse it. So like I said, this is a very comprehensive, as I've talked about in the past, excuse me, I'm a little bit under the weather, so my voice is a little cracky. This is a very comprehensive piece, because up until now, there was no process in which a tenant can go and seek remedies or other, or anything of that nature. They would essentially have to go to the county. And if, you know, the county is basically excluding Los Angeles, that's a county of 6 million people, so if they're asking for assistance there, you know, good luck, where at least now, we'll have Ben and his staff that'll be able to, you know, be able to be at the forefront to look at this. What I've also mentioned in the past is, this is something that's, you know, it's a very big step forward. It's not the 100% solution, not that we could ever get to something like that, because again, we would have to be able to defend this in court, but it is a very, very big milestone, I believe, for the city of, for the city of Baldwin Park, and more importantly, for our tenants, because this will provide quite a bit of tenant protection for individuals. Just one example is, you know, if a tenant, and this was raised with me yesterday on a call, is they asked if, you know, what happens if there's a tenant that is deceased? You know, do individuals get kicked out? Right now, they are able to do that in a way, without much protection. With our process here, the, either the children or the spouse or the domestic partner or others living in that unit will be able to carry on and stay there in that, in that unit until the term is, the term of the lease agreement. So like I said, this does provide a lot of protection for tenants, but it's done at a very fair and reasonable manner in which, you know, again, property owners are still able to, you know, hopefully invest in their property to over, improve the overall conditions for everyone living in their, in those units.
All right, thank you. Let me just, let me just, as an example, so make sure that I'm understanding. So just refer to single-family homes. Say, I have a contract with, with a person, a year contract, lease on a home, and I want to take the person out. In other words, three, four months later, you know what? I want you out. What does the just clause do, and that, is that, will the homeowner be able to do that, or they incur costs to, for relocation? I'm kind of curious on that one, the just cause.
In that instance, Mr. Mayor, the just cause means that they would have to have some reason to kick them out. They couldn't do what you were saying, which is, hey, I want you out now. They could not do that.
Okay.
They would have to, they would have to say they have breached the lease agreement, they're committing a crime, they've created a nuisance, something that would create a just cause for eviction, and we have those kinds of examples in our ordinance, so we know what that is.
And I was reading, so then, so in essence, the owner, or the owner of the particular home would have to pay out to the actual renters. If that person decides, hey, I'm going to take, remove you out of the property, you have a lease that's a six months, so then that owner would have to pay that family?
No, that owner couldn't move them out for any reason.
At all.
Because they have a contract with them already. And so unless they have a reason to breach that contract, they couldn't move them out.
Okay.
But they could move them out if there was some, like drugs being dealt on the property, or they didn't pay the rent, or anything of that nature. But they can't just decide six months into a lease that they want to move them out. They couldn't do that under this ordinance.
Okay, all right, well then, okay, all right. I just, I was just kind of curious on how that worked.
And just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, and for myself, but my understanding is, there is a process in which a landlord can ask for that unit back, under the various segments that we have. That would be is, if a landlord wishes to have that tenant to place their family members in that unit or home, unit, there is a process for him doing that. That does kick in the reallocations and, and expenses that are built into it. So it is, it's not necessarily a cheap process for a landlord to do that, because that's also going to be based on the type of tenant that's in there, how long they've been there, and that increases the relocation and expenses, so it's not something that a landlord can just do on his own, correct?
That is correct. So there is a process to remove a unit from the rental market, and if you do that, then you would have to pay relocation costs to the people that you move out, and then that unit would no longer be part of the rent control ordinance because they're taking it out. They can only do that under certain circumstances, and if they do do that, it has to stay off the market for five years.
Wow.
If it doesn't stay off the market for five years, then it goes right back to the rent it was when they tried to take it off. In other words, you don't want landlords to try and take the property out of the rental market, wait six months, and then jack the price up. So if they do that, they wait six months or a year and a half, and they try and put it back on the market again?
Mm-hmm.
They have to go back to the rent that it was a year and a half ago when they tried to take it out. So there's absolutely no benefit for a landlord trying to take it out of the market to try and jack up the rent.
But, but, hold on, but what is, the five-year, what did you say about the five-years of the cap?
If you say that you have a property and you want to move your mother into that property, you can take it out of the rental unit. You can move your mom into that property. And for five years, that property has to stay off of the market, off of the rental market.
Wow.
If it doesn't, you can put it back on the market, but you have to put it back to the rent it was when you took it off the market. So that way, we create no incentive for somebody to take it off the market, jack up the rent 50%, and put it back on right away.
So I'd be curious, so say it's off the market for five years, does it come back at that five-year?
No, when it's off the market for five years, if it comes back on the market, it will come at market price.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We're running out of time, and we haven't given the public time to...
Yeah, that's fine. Let me go ahead.
I also would like to speak, but I'm going to wait until they're done. I want to make sure they have...
That's fine. All right, so at this point, we'll open up public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, interesting, okay. Well, if you need more, we'll extend it, not a big deal.
My name is Beatrice. I think so I need some interpretation, but I try to do my best, and I'll see you later. First, I want to say thank you, Mr. Paul Hernandez, Councilmember Paul Hernandez, and also Councilmember Alejandra Garcia, for all your leadership and put this first step in the, in the conversations. It's very important for our community, tenants' community, to have these protections. We try to understand better this ordinance. Many, many numbers, the item of numbers are very well, as Councilmember Paul say, stand unfriendly, but also other points we can understand, because we don't have the legally knowledge. Also, I can see some doubts from some of you about just cause, because I read a NIP Prop AB 1482, and that bill explained very well about just cause. And like, like the lawyers say, just cause is only for specific cause, like don't be, don't be, follow the rules and the agreement rules, or not pay the rent. So, and many other words, legally words. And it's, and also, we have, I read, and also, we have a question in the section 20, 129.13, where say that 50% of the charge to, pass through, when the landlord makes some, fix some problems in the property, the landlords, especially in Baldwin Park, and you can see when you canvass it for your campaign, you can see that the property's been abandoned for many, many years, and they never stop to charge the people, even they have the no, they don't fix nothing in the property, and put the families living in terrible conditions, that no are human conditions, like any families deserve to live, and even our children. So why we give them 50% of their, they all, because the property increase the value when they, when you fix that property?
True.
And make more beautiful that property. If they take advantage of this, the law, allow them to increase the rent, and they don't fix nothing in the property, why we need to give them 50%? But this is only one item. We need to understand better, make the numbers, and also, we need more time to understand and asking, I know that you are very amazing people, and I'm so, so really, so grateful, because this means we are working together in one community, and, but we need to also asking the experts, like public counsel, and I'm very grateful, with Councilmember Paul and Alejandra, they are meeting with us many times, and calls, and everything, so that is amazing. Good communication always is for better for our community. But we need some clarification, so we need more space to understand, and also, we need invite more community, really, this, this is my volunteer job.
Right.
And also, as everyone in campaign, our job is to keep the families, preserve families and homes. And I don't remember see the vocabulary about to prevent homelessness. As everyone in, as united way, we need to see that vocabulary and this policy, because was the first, when I made my presentation here, was the first asking, to prevent, to protect, to, to keep the families and homes. And we give very, many numbers of that, why we need to, to keep the families and seniors in homes. This is, I don't know, you have question for me, from my community, and I'm so happy to make questions, so, to make, to answer questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I can certainly speak to 50% part of it.
That's fine.
Does anybody else in the public want to speak before we ask the questions?
Regarding the rent control, anyone else? She wants. Oh, oh, yes, come on up to the, come on up to the lectern, please. Thank you.
My name's Monica Alber, and I would just really, it's...
My name's Monica Alber, and I would just really, it's some of the wording in here, and I just can't wrap my head around it, so if, I don't know who could possibly answer this for me, and Mayor Lozano, you already touched on it a little bit. But one of the slides prior, it said pre-1995. Okay, what, what does that have to, is that houses that are older than 1995? If it's a single-family home, I have two, they're prior to 1995, are those under the rent control?
Those would be potential, they would not, right?
No, the single-family homes are only covered by the just cause eviction clauses.
Just cause, okay, because that's where I had a problem with the wording on the second page of the ordinance, 12901, controlled rental units. I thought, A, I just didn't, maybe it was a long day at work, and I couldn't focus on it, but it just seemed like I couldn't really get my head around that. So I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Yes, legal counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the section that you're referring to, ma'am, it says, "All residential units in Baldwin Park built prior to January 1, 1995, except single-family homes." So, single-family homes, whether it's built before 1995 or after 1995, is excluded.
So now I have a question for you. Costa Hawkins says, any, anything built after, after 1995 would fall under this law. My question is, why are we not including units or homes before 1995, since it does not fall under state law? So that's a question. I know there's a lot of questions, and like Beatriz said, you know, the language is not clear, we're not experts at, at the language, so there's been a lot of good changes. I appreciate the changes that have been made, and things deleted and things added. However, I feel that we need more clarification on, on language, and what exactly it will be covering. For example, talked about the landlord charging 50% of fixing whatever it is to, needs to be fixed. Is there anything that we can put in this ordinance that states that the units need to be checked to make sure that it's in good living condition prior to it being rented out, once the city knows it's being rented? Otherwise, the tenants moving into the rental unit now are going to be left with repairing the unit if need, if the, the owner suddenly decides, okay, I have new tenants now, I'm going to fix it, and now they're going to be left with having to pay part of that. So can we include anything into this ordinance to protect the tenants more, to make sure that they have a nice living space, that they're paying the rent, and not going to be caught up having to fix somebody's rental? Again, more time to, to look at the whole ordinance, I appreciate that. We start, I started this conversation long ago about trying to put a rent ordinance in the city of Baldwin Park. I was told it couldn't be done, but I'm very happy now that, again, we're all working on it collaboratively, so that we can find the right ordinance that covers everything. And I just think it takes time to decipher each section and exactly what it means, to make sure there is no loopholes, because sometimes some language may create loopholes that we may not see. So make sure that legal counsel has time to thoroughly read every single section and interpret for us those areas that we do not understand, so that we're all clear, and then make sure that all council members have some buy-in into this ordinance, you know, some ideas, put them in. And that's why I think we should sit down as a group, not as a formal meeting, but as a group, to discuss exactly what's in the ordinance, and how can we fix it, how can we change the wording, what makes more sense? And each one of us be part of it, instead of, you know, meeting individually. I know they met with Councilmember Hernandez, they met with me, and it's individual, so I really would like to have conversations all together, so we can all make this decision together, not individual. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me, first of all, say for one, I think this is a really good ordinance. I mean, I don't think we're going to be able to create something that's going to make everyone 100% happy. We obviously know that. Now, if we look at the last election, and I definitely support it for the apartments, and how it also covers a home with a just clause, I think that, 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 that is fine. Proposition 10, am I correct? Was that Proposition 10 that went on the, on the, on the ballot two years ago, throughout the state of California, about having rent control, I guess as a blanket, blanket cities throughout, throughout the 58 counties, failed? And in Baldwin Park, it also failed. So it's a very, very clear message and indicator, to me, from the homeowners of the city of Baldwin Park, that they were not in support of that, you know, covering their homes. Now, to be transparent, we don't have the home, the big portions of the homeowners here this evening to hear, they're, they're, of course, renters, and you have a vested interest in the city of Baldwin Park, which I obviously do respect. But for me, I think that this policy clearly covers, one, the 1,600 units that are important for people and apartment dwellers that unfortunately sometimes, or take advantage of, of, of indigent population, because I've helped a lot of them, and I know what it, and what it feels like, because I've been out there since I've been in office, and even on single-family homes when they've gotten tossed out. And I will usually say, stay there, you got three months, wait till the court comes around. So this time around, it's going to be totally different, not only for the apartments, but for the single-family homes in the city. So that says a lot about this policy. But again, all then by saying that you're, no way you're going to be able to have a 100% perfect policy. I think that we've gone actually beyond the state level, so that's something to also look at. But go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for, for made the clarif, made the comments. I know this is, we always say this is very good ordinance, and, and we try to cover the, like, as a council member, try to cover all the loopholes and something. But I want to clarify about Proposition 10. That Proposition 10 no means, don't was created for, for rent control, was created to repeal Costa Hawkins, to leave the, allow the cities, govern, local governments, that, allow them to make their own housing rules. It's only the clarification I want to say about Proposition 10. And also, the, the proposition, any, they, anyway they want, but they invest 100, more than 100,000 millions of dollars
That is true, you're right.
To misinformation, and also, we have more borders and more houses in Baldwin Park. So, but that no means the, the proposition fail because it's not good, fail because they invest a lot of money.
And I, and I
But only the clarification was that, I prefer have the dialogue with you, my local government, than go to Sacramento and make this.
No, not here yet, thank you. And, and I just want to say, the city of Pasadena is, is also looking at this same type of ordinance for their, for their municipality. So I think that for us to be able to pass something like this tonight will be a historical landmark for us, because again, the, the hardworking people that make this community, that make the county, that make the country, you know, they need to be, they need to be safeguarded in some way. And I think this is, this is a start, then from there we'll build on.
No, and I want to say that this is a one example for all, all their, other cities.
Absolutely.
Even Pasadena, they have a good ordinance, but I think so, we made a story, and I'm so proud to, to be part of this change, and it's why I say I prefer to work with my local government than with people who I never see again.
All righty. It's not perfect, but it's, it's definitely a dangerous start.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, yes, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
I just want to make a couple of observations on, on the report. I think that the report, and I want to thank the staff and everybody, council members who had input on this particular report. But the report lacks information on the, on the, I guess it's the Hawkins Law, the contra Hawkins Law. It doesn't explain it in this report, I think it should have been a part of it, because it was discussed last time, it was brought up in the last meeting, but there's no explanation about it in this report, in the staff report that we're looking at. There's no data about renters, how many renters we have in the city, and different types of renters. I mean, you're putting it up here, but it's not in the staff report. On one part, I know, that I don't agree with, that this is good protection and a good ordinance for the community, is because we, we, we're excluding for rent control residential units, if I'm correct. I mean, right now, I just heard the attorney and, and the mayor saying that for single-family homes, they're not protected under rent control, so those rents could basically be raised up.
At any given time.
And I, and I have a concern about that, because if that was in this ordinance and allowed, I would be okay, a little bit better with it. And later on, you read through the ordinance, it doesn't include the ADU, so if I had an ADU in my property, I could raise the rent on those individuals, and a lot of ADUs are, have senior citizens that, that use them, and you could raise the rent on those individuals. I know that Baldwin Park is about a 60% residents that rent in our city, whether they're single-family homes or apartment units or what have you, but there's a lot of it, and, and also, if you go with this, I've been to some of the school board meetings, they talk about a reduction of, of children attending the schools, that means that the families are basically moving out, because a lot of complaints are about the cost of living in Baldwin Park and the rents that are, that are going up, and that also impacts the school district. So I, I would recommend that I just, you know, if we hold this off for one more meeting, to discuss it a little more, to flesh out a little bit more of it. Another reason I would tell it, just hold it off one more meeting, is I got a revised report, you know, when I, when I came here to the council meeting, so, and when I read it, I, I just, you know, just takes a little bit of time to digest, to read everything, to make sure that I'm comfortable with it. So I would ask in a friendly way to my council colleagues, if we could just hold it off one more, that everybody in the audience and the public just read one more time what we're looking at, so we can make recommendations about this particular item, and, you know, I think I'd be better, I would, I would appreciate that from my council colleagues, and I'd be better off to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco, at this point, yes, counsel.
So, we're all in agreement that we definitely on rent ordinance, there's no doubt, and I know staff has been working, Paul has been working, we've all been working on this ordinance, and we do have that rent freeze in place, which protects us from, from anybody getting evicted, or the rent getting higher on them. So we do have the time to clarify some things, to make sure that everybody's mind's at peace, that they understand in detail what is being put on here, or, you know, if they have any questions, what exactly does this mean? We can maybe change the wording to a more understanding language. So again, we have the rent freeze in place, that helps us, that, and that was the whole reason to put the rent in free, so we wouldn't have to rush through the ordinance, and we can understand, again, there's a lot of good things in this ordinance, but there are some things that need clarification, not just for myself, but for the audience, and, and the whole idea, this is, I see this as a community ordinance, ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park, so it's for the people of Baldwin Park. So I really would like to have more time to study it, so we can better understand it, it's more clear on the questions Mr. Pacheco has, the questions I have, the questions that the residents have, and maybe we can get together again to go over it again, read the, the new one that was just put in front of us, to read it again, and we can better understand it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Alejandra Avila. All right, so at this point, anyone else wishing to have any further information? All right, so if not at this point, I think that's the only subject that we have, then we'll go into the seven o'clock meeting, and it is item number 11, which is a public hearing that will allow the residents further input at that time.
3:47, it's George.
No, I know, but we could just recess, right? All right, so at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the, the, excuse me, hold on, this, the special meeting, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second?
Any objections? See you in a moment. All right, thank you. Then we'll, we will rejoin at 7:00 PM.